Well, the first reason is a lot of citizens asked me to run and placed a lot of emphasis on my running. I'll just put it that way. And the other thing is when you see the field of candidates and that Suzanne Atwell was not running again, I felt the need to bring institutional knowledge. I think that's very important in government to have someone with a memory of the major issues and decisions that have been made before. Well, since 1989, I've been very involved in city issues. And first, in the not-for-profit community, mental health, volunteer center, things like that. And then I was involved as a practicing lawyer since 1990 in the city. And I've been involved in many boards and have a lot of experience in policymaking on not-for-profit boards as well as being involved in city issues. And then when I helped to form my neighborhood association, I became a representative of the public on a lot of important issues, including sewage infrastructure, transportation, developed planning and development issues. And from that, I became president of all of the neighborhoods and assisted other neighborhoods in representing their constituent groups. And so I have the broadest experience of all candidates for representing people over the years. I think the number one issue is transportation. We're facing a lot of gridlock and a lot of complaints about gridlock. And we have an inadequate transportation system. The transportation plan that we previously had before us was taking away things from a good transportation plan and accepting gridlock. What we have is an incomplete transportation system. A transportation system that is based on cars. And it's also based on not having adequate roadways. Well, I think the last transportation plan was, the best you could talk about it, was amateurish. It accepted gridlock. And the first thing we need, and I'm hoping that when we get a new planning director, that planning director has some skills in transportation planning and can help us move forward on a transportation plan. Then I think we need a transportation advisory committee so that the citizens can have input on what is the adequate transportation plan. Then we certainly need a transportation network analysis. Because what we have now is we take things piecemeal. For example, the Fruitville Road Plan. They're talking about narrowing Fruitville Road, but they're not talking about where the traffic is going to go. And I can tell you, there is nowhere for that traffic to go. And that is why we have a defective network. Not only do we have a defective network for cars, but we have a defective network for bicycles and pedestrians. So when we talk about Sarasota, which is often defined as being in the top 10 of good, Sarasota is in the top 10 of bad on our transportation system, including pedestrian and bicycle deaths. And that's one thing we really have to address because it affects the entire community. One of the things that happens in government is the idea that we have to do something now, so we're going to do something that doesn't work now. And that takes up all the air from what might work. I was asking over the years, the staff, "Well, you say you're going to have multimodal transportation. Tell me where there's a continuous bike path in this city. Tell me where we have a bus that actually operates and takes people where they want to go, when they want to go there." We don't have those things. Tell me about how you're going to get people from Longboat Key to dinner in a theater in time to get there in time. We just don't have that right now. And we're not going to build a $100 million bridge to make that happen. So what we need to do is we need to look at how we get from here to there in a really reliable way. The last plan that was presented to us was, let's lower the level of service so we can pretend that people will go someplace and they will be willing to wait. And then they'll be willing to use alternative routes when you don't provide alternative routes. So it was a game rather than a resolution. Well, I would say that's one place where we do agree. I am on the Metropolitan Planning Organization. And we seem to be in agreement on those issues. Because we both understand that we have to resolve them or people won't want to live here. They won't want to visit here. In fact, visit Sarasota, when they did a study of why people visit Sarasota, they say, "It's a place where you can just relax and be at ease." Well, if you're stuck in traffic, that's not relaxing and being at ease. And that really affects our economy. You had an interesting headline in a recent edition, "Can We Still Keep Sarasota Small?" I don't think that's the real question. I think the last word shouldn't have been "small." It should have been "livable." And a lot of cities are more livable than that. They preserve parks, they preserve green space, they have setbacks, they have trees. And the greening of Chicago shows us that you can actually have a big city, but you can preserve things that make people feel it's livable. And that's where we need to focus our efforts. Multimodal transportation, including bicycles and safe pedestrian access, they are critical to having a livable city. Green space is critical to having a livable city. And in our area, making tourists feel welcome and at home and relaxed and at ease are critical to our economy. First of all, you have setbacks. You add setbacks into your code. And then you don't give away parks for development, which is what some people, including current candidates who claim to be park advocates, have given away, public parks for development. You preserve your parks as if they are vital to your city and the operation of your city. I am in favor of what's called a necklace of green, which is a very old concept from Frederick Law Olmsted, who created Central Park. Is that we have still in this city the ability to connect all of our parks and green spaces with each other, starting in North Sarasota, working around the bay all the way to Payne Park. And one of the ways we can connect them is with bicycle trails, including the multi-use recreational trail and the Legacy Trail. In addition, the Legacy Trail, extending the Legacy Trail into the city actually is part of multimodal transportation. Because once it's in the city, people can use it to commute. The trail in St. Petersburg, 30% of the people riding on that trail are using it to commute to work. Well, certainly I've advocated for it on the Metropolitan Planning Organization. And also, I think that the city, one of the things that the Trust for Public Lands has asked us, or has asked me personally, is that, is the city going to help fund it? And at the last meeting on impact fees, we talked, people from the Friends of the Legacy Trail came forward and said, "We need to really take this multimodal emphasis seriously and to help fund this bicycle trail." Well, having been on the planning board for a number of years and having studied planning in graduate school, I can tell you that the decision about the outlines of your city, that's a policy decision. And the public should be involved in policy decisions. And no code is so clear, so defined, that to leave out the policy decision. And the main policy decision that is left out of administrative site plan approval is what's called compatibility. And that's not just neighborhood compatibility. That's compatibility with the already developed public realm. And one of the things we've lost since we lost a planning director and since staff has been doing this under the Duane Plan, is we've lost human scale. And that's one of the things that when Andres Duane came into town and did the Downtown Master Plan, he said, "We're doing this transect, but we're going to always, with big buildings, preserve human scale." So what he defined as human scale was that you have to have buildings that the mass and scale is not incompatible with the human being. And we don't have that right now. We have lost that. So we have these massive buildings, these super blocks, that are monuments of poor planning. And you can ask any planning professional and they will tell you that. Because it's our city. It's our city. We're the citizens and it's our city. And actually, years and years ago, 2006 to be exact, I went up to the Department of Community Affairs, which no longer exists in the state of Florida. And we said, "A 10-story building next to a single-family neighborhood is not compatible." And they, you know what they told me? They said, "Compatibility is a local government issue." In other words, it's a policymaking issue. So the real issue that the voters are going to have to decide is, do they want to decide what their city is like? Or do they want a staff person to decide what their city is like? Who might not even live in the city of Sarasota. Small projects, small 10,000 square foot projects should not be subject to review unless they are something that actually is next to, for example, a small convenience store next to a neighborhood. Well, those take a lot of traffic, have a lot of implications. So you have to define not just the size, but you have to define the use. And that's what the old code used to do, is define use and size. Well, the devil is in the details and so far, we don't have all the details. I think there are some good things and some things that are undefined so far. And a lot of that is not yet determined. But I will evaluate it the same way I evaluate everything that's presented to me. I will spend a lot of time on it. I will study it a lot. I will talk to the people I represent. I will listen to every side of the debate in order to give a fair evaluation of everything. I work hard to make sure that I represent everybody in this community. And so that's what I will do. But so far, I don't have the details. I've attended a ton of meetings on this and I've heard a lot of talking. I've heard a lot about these projects that they're doing. But I haven't gotten a lot of details about the code as a whole yet. Extending the administrative site plan approval to neighborhoods, I will be opposed to that. This is our community. It's what we've learned from the Downtown Master Plan. Is there a lot of undefined issue? There are a lot of undefined issues. And in those undefined issues is where discretion is. And you cannot, no code can define all of those issues. And when I go to these meetings, somebody will ask a specific question like, "Can there be a Super Walmart in my neighborhood?" I've heard that question. 15 minutes of rambling on and nobody has yet answered the question, "Can there be a Super Walmart in my neighborhood?" So I don't feel like I have the details that resolve those issues yet. And I'm waiting to see as it's written on the paper. But as a lawyer for 40 years, I can tell you, no code defines everything, especially a planning code. Well, the first thing is we know where the expenditures are and they're on staff. We know where the highest expenditures are, are on the policing. Public safety is very important. It's very important. And we also know that we have the unfunded pension liability. And it's a very difficult issue, but I definitely feel that we have to come to terms with it. For example, in the other post-employee benefits, the issue was, do we take away free dependent coverage for retirees? Well, when you're looking at 80% of your ad valorem tax dollars going to pensions, you have to think, are we going to fund retirees or are we going to fund current services? How are we going to balance those things? And that was a very difficult decision because there was an expectation, "I'm going to have free dependent coverage forever." And we just couldn't do it. We can't afford it. And the other thing is, are you going to have a defined benefit retirement system or a defined contribution retirement system? If you have a defined benefit retirement system, you as a city guarantee a certain kind of payout, no matter what the investments produce. And we have a, we have to have a conservative investment strategy so our investments don't produce that much money. So you have to say, define contribution. And the employee takes the risk as well as the city in the pension plan. But those are things that I've worked on. With regard to the lawsuit against me, that was a frivolous lawsuit, a lot of people say, "Well, they spent money on her and she shouldn't be reelected because they spent money on her." Well, I would say the city had been sued 24 times by the same people. And they haven't sued since I won. And we've spent millions of dollars. And do you defend a frivolous lawsuit? Or do you knuckle under to somebody who files frivolous lawsuits? Which is the best, which is the best money-saving thing? As an attorney, I can tell you, a lot of insurance companies, a lot of people are saying, "You have to stand up to the frivolous lawsuit because you're going to, in the end, pay more money if you start settling these things." And the main benefit, and the benefit that I felt I had to stand up for, is the right of elected officials who are representatives to go and listen to their constituents. I mean, there used to be a First Amendment in this country. And that First Amendment says there's a right of assembly to present your grievances to your public officials. And that's exactly what was happening there. A bunch of merchants assembled and they were complaining to us and we were listening to them. I did not expect Suzanne Atwell to come in at the last minute, but neither one of us did anything to try to collude. In fact, three, four years later, we still don't agree on homeless policy. So there was no collusion. What the judge heard though, at the case, is that the judge heard that there was another group that did collude. And that was a bunch of politicals who went up to Pinellas Safe Harbor, came back and decided they wanted to put the Come As You Are Shelter on a city utility site. And the judge also got the minutes of public meetings that went on for three years afterwards in which the reason that city utility site that these people chose was not used is because environmental studies showed that it wasn't fit for human habitation and it would cost $7 million. Maybe that had something to do with it rather than that one meeting that no one remembered. Somebody's going to criticize you because you're going and listening to your constituents? He's a judge. Judges, you can't ex parte a judge. But I'm an elected representative and I have to listen to constituents. And I can't say to another elected representative, "You can't be there and listen to constituents when I'm there, especially when you decide at the last minute you want to come." I can't tell people not to come to a meeting of constituents. We are both elected representatives. And by the way, Suzanne Atwell, when she settled, she sent out a press release that said, "I am firmly convinced I did not violate the Sunshine Law." Well, I believe in giving people choices. And I think that the public needs to be presented with some choices here. I know a lot of people don't like paid parking. And I know the last foray into parking meters was a big disaster. So there are some choices. Should we charge taxpayers for paid parking? Because we're going to have more than a $2 million deficit in parking. Should we charge taxpayers out of their property tax? That means we would raise property tax. 45 cents out of every dollar of raised tax would go to the schools. 25 cents of every tax dollar that we raise to pay for parking would go to the county, which means that only out of that pot, only 21 cents could be devoted to the budget. So do you want your taxes raised so that 21% might be available for paid parking? That doesn't look like a very efficient system. So then, my office, I paid for parking. It's in my rent. So one thing you could do is you could say to the landlords where they're supposed to be parking, "You pay for parking as part of your ownership of real estate," knowing they would pass it through to the merchants. Or you could say to the merchants, "You could pay for the parking for your customers," knowing that it may not, you don't know who's your customer or who isn't. You could give a ticket to them or you could give a token to them, but you could pay for that too. Well, a lot of the merchants downtown say, "We can't afford to pay for that." And I believe that. I really do believe that. It's a hard business environment right now for retailers all over. So the question then comes, do you want to pay, do you want the user to pay? And that's parking meters. But the public can give me their input and I'll give them those choices. Well, I've already talked about the importance of having parks. Parks make cities livable and parks make cities visitable also. So we need parks. Parks are an essential part. Now, the question is, that we decided previously, is, can we have an election on whether to have a parks district? And we've been informed we can't have a referendum on whether to have a parks district. So either the commission has to make that decision of a dedicated parks district or it has to come out of that 21 cents of every dollar. So that is a decision that I'm waiting to hear advice from the parks district. But my view is that we should have a dedicated fund right now. But I am, we haven't made a final decision on that. And I like to listen to everybody's input on that. And I'm open to hearing different opinions on that. Although I do think that if we have parks, we have to have recreation in those parks or else they're just used for bad activity. That's a little too vague to answer. I have to say, it depends on what the services are and what the taxes are being raised for and how much they're being raised. My feeling about it is, we have to adequately fund government, but anybody who knows me knows that I'm a core services person. I believe you have to provide for public safety. I agree that you have to be able to flush your toilet. And I believe that you have to have things that make life livable in a city, including parks, which the public is, you know, individual people do not provide for public parks. So I don't know what you're talking about. If you're talking about paying for, paying $500 million for a performing arts center and bonding $500 million, no, I'm not for that. I'm for, first, let's look at the core services and the cost. And anything that you do in government, you have to do a cost-benefit analysis. One of the things we've tackled is that we used to have a lot of change orders on every contract. It seemed like every contract had a change order. And so we started focusing on, let's have fewer change orders. And what do we have to do to have fewer change orders? Because it seemed like everybody underbid a project and then everybody came back for a change order. And so we started doing this construction manager at risk. And we have really reduced the cost of change orders. So that's one thing that has been a very positive purchasing idea. What I think is missing in government is that you make a change and you assume it's going to work, but you don't necessarily go back and evaluate, "Did this turn out the way we intended and how do we change it?" For example, the Rosemary Overlay District. We were told, you know, "If you grant 75 units an acre, it will produce affordable housing." But the problem with it is, we gave away our park. We lost 400,000 cubic yards of trees. And has it really worked out to provide affordable housing? Well, I can say not yet. And it may never. So that's something that we need to go back and look at. The Downtown Master Plan is something we need to go back and look at. Has this actually worked out the way we wanted? Now, we talk about homelessness and we say, "We have done a lot." We've housed over, permanently housed over 500 people. And that's huge success. But what has worked and what hasn't worked? Have we studied that? I know in other, we're relying on studies in other areas, but we haven't really studied, has what we have done worked in getting chronic homeless individuals off the street? Those are things that you need to have, a constant system of experimentation and evaluation. We've made a huge amount of progress. Is it enough? No. And one of the issues is, how do you fund it? And one of the other issues is that a lot of people are going in a lot of directions. And so when somebody feeds people on the street, that keeps people on the street. And what they don't think about is the next thing, somebody has to use the bathroom. And they just use the bathroom in front of a business. And that creates a lot of problems. And so when I talk to people who are feeding people on the street, they feel that they're doing it because they're kind and have the best of intentions. And sometimes they tell me, "It's God's work." But they never think of the impact. So areas that have really, really had great progress in this have done things, the thing called the Stanford Collective Impact Model. And that's really getting into the weeds. But what it really means is that all of the entities in government, all of the entities in the community, including the Chamber of Commerce, including the business community, including the faith community, they all say, "This is what works and we're going to focus on what works." Not what makes us feel good temporarily, but let's focus on what works. And we know what works is housing, breaking up the social dynamic on the street by providing people housing and wraparound services. That's, the federal government and the state government say, "That's our official policy." And suddenly, after we created the Mental Health Court, the county is getting on board with that. Well, I think we're making progress. I think there's a lot of, there are a lot of people who just want to save face. I don't care if they save face as long as we're going in the same direction. And then there's also money. Who is not aligned yet? The business community, the faith community. We need to get those people aligned with us as well. So that we don't feed people on the streets, so that we don't give money to panhandlers, so that we actually spend our money toward permanents instead of temporary fixes. Because those temporary fixes will make you feel great in the short term, but they do a great deal of harm. One of the things we get every month, the hospital report. One person went to the hospital 27 times in a month. Well, the hospital is spending $6 million a year on emergency room services. What if we could divert that money toward a permanent solution so the hospital is no longer spending $7 million a year? Would the hospital cooperate in helping to fund a permanent solutions program? We spend $10 million a year on the jail. I mean, there's a lot of money floating around that we're dealing with people, you know, for temporary solutions or helping people with temporary solutions. But we could spend a lot less. In fact, the statistics in other places say you could spend 1/5 the amount by going for permanence. Well, the first thing we do is we, we, when we say we have an affordable housing program, let's stick by it. For example, the Affordable Housing Overlay District provided for that property off of Second Street to provide affordable housing. The last meeting of Paul Carajulo and Shannon Snyder, they voted against having an affordable component. So now we have a 200-unit acre, 200 units per acre building that is going to provide, they got four times the density that was supposed to provide for affordable housing, and not one penny or one unit is going for affordable housing. The same is true in the county. They have an affordable housing component at the Benderson Development. They waive it. And so if you are going to have an affordable housing component that you require, you should stick by it. The other thing is, on affordable housing, there's affordable housing in my neighborhood. The housing was the housing that people bought at an affordable price. People have to be able to stay in their houses so that the new housing stock that we create is not just helping people move from their affordable house to a more, another affordable house. So we have to help people stay in place. Now, we have this consolidated plan, and it does help people stay in place in affordable housing. We spend a lot of money every year on the ship funding for keeping affordable housing livable so that people can, who are living in affordable housing can stay there. Now, how do you create affordable housing? One way you do it is by inclusionary zoning, which says if you're going to build a big project, a certain number of units have to be affordable. That, that's a method. We use state and federal funds for affordable housing, but it's not enough. Can we get private people to engage in that process? How do we do it? There are, there are other ways, but you have to set it as a priority. I just met with the Shure Group, which is a faith-based group which has these big projects every year. And this year, their topic is affordable housing. And I wonder what the churches are going to do to help us create affordable housing. Are they going to, are they going to help develop it? Just last, just this week, somebody came forward with a plan to change the comprehensive plan to have housing. But they wanted to put a lot of density in an area that may have been the best area to try to experiment on tiny houses. But I think we need to have a lot of different ideas and experiment with them. People have no end of ideas. The real issue is how do you implement them with very few funds? Well, this is an issue that I'm being scapegoated on quite a bit because what really happened with Thunder by the Bay, which I am being blamed by other candidates for getting rid of, is that I received a lot of complaints from downtown merchants. And then I was hearing from another side that says, "Oh, it's just a few people complaining, and they're just the complainers." And so I asked, "Well, let's see if we can find out if this is the majority or the minority of people complaining." Because these complaints were very loud from people who were big merchants in downtown and from people who had a lot of presence downtown, like the Florida Studio Theater. And so I, I said, "I don't know what the answer to this is. Let's do a survey and see. Do, do downtown businesses think it helps their business? Or do they think it hurts their business?" Because you can read, "Experts say that events don't help business." And we did a study with Robert Gibbs, who's a national expert, and he said, "Events don't help business." But I didn't know the answer to that. So I asked, "Let's do a, let's do a survey of the downtown businesses." And when they did the survey, it turned out that 80% of the downtown businesses said that Thunder by the Bay hurt their business and did not help their business. So then the next thing that happened is, because of the construction downtown, Thunder by the Bay was asked to move down the street because it had grown, and, and those were places where the cranes were taking up the street. So they moved down the street, and they had to get 3/4 of the people on that street, or the merchants on that street, to agree. And they couldn't get 3/4 of the merchants to agree. So then the city offered them a location by Payne Park. But by then, they were mad, and they just went out to Lakewood Ranch. But the, the people behind Thunder by the Bay went out and said that I did it. Well, if I asked the right question, yes, I asked the right question. How many people really think that Thunder by the Bay helps their business? And when 80% said no, it's hard to ignore. With regard to the Chalk Festival, I really had no say-so in that. The issue was, can the Chalk Festival operate on public streets more than three days? And, and staff said, "No, they can't, they can't operate six days." And then it was brought to the commission, and they said, "No," also. And so, yes, a lot of people like the Chalk Festival, and a lot of people like Thunder by the Bay. But the issue is, they outgrew our public streets. And the real issue is, should we consider the businesses who operate year-round? Should we consider the people who live here year-round and expect their public streets to be public? Or should we consider the special event that only produces benefit for a very short time? I am the year-round person. Well, you create event space. I mean, there's an easy way. We already have event space. It's called the fairgrounds. And if the fairgrounds are not easy to use, let's see how we can make them usable. Or if there is not event space, let's see if we can create an event space where people can live in peace. Where these big festivals, where people really like to come to them, and tourists like to enjoy them. Let's see if we can use something other than public streets for them. Well, I think the city has already played a role in setting parameters. That, and the city also has played a role in, in looking at, making sure that the public is heard in this process. The public was very much polled in, in a lot of public events a couple of years ago, and they said they wanted a park. Then you have stewardship. The last time I heard from Bayfront 2020 at an official meeting was that they, they were talking about a performing arts center somewhere north of $500 million. And our current debt is $87 million, so that's not fiscally responsible. But, but the question is, should that 42 acres be covered with concrete? Should it be viewed as free land for anybody who has an idea? No, it belongs to the public, and it should belong to the public for posterity. And I have repeatedly said, "It belongs to the public, and I want to preserve it for the public for posterity." And the other thing that it does is it, it provides a view for the public of a bay that is one of the most uniquely beautiful bays in the world. And, and that belongs to the public, and it belongs to our visitors as well. And I want to preserve that. Now, the people who are currently on the Sarasota Bayfront Planning Organization, especially the chair, has worked on big public projects before when he was in Cincinnati, and has a lot of experience in creating big public projects that the public loves or adores. I've talked to him, and, and I have some confidence that he is headed on the right track. He's a big consumer of information, and has viewed all the studies, and is demanding that his group work as hard as he does, which I think is a very good sign. So, so far, we've created parameters for that. And I'm feeling pretty good about that organization. Well, I've heard it twice in this week. You're the one who stands up for us. I've heard it from citizens twice this week. You are the one who stands up for us. You are the one who listens to us. You are the one who hears our opinions and advocates for us on the commission. You are the one who is always prepared. You're the one who asks the questions that we want asked. I go to all kinds of meetings all the time. And I try to listen to all elements of the community, and I am the least insular person that you can find. When somebody comes up to me in the grocery store and wants to talk to me and wants to complain to me, I don't say, "I've got to get my frozen food home today." I listen to them. I make sure I am in public places so I can hear from the public. I do not say to somebody, "I'm not interested in talking to you because you said something bad about me last week." I am the kind of person who says, "I'm anxious to hear from you, and I will go to your meeting and listen to you." Because I don't want to be an insular person. I want to listen to all sides. And part of problem solving is taking all sides and integrating them into a solution that people like. Because I have been. I have been all these years. And it didn't, and I didn't have to be an elected person to do it. I, I've been listening all these years, since 1989. I've been trying to work on community solutions since 1989. And I've been there. I'm not somebody who just showed up. I'm, I've been involved all of these years, whether it's on, as an advocate for children, whether it's an advocate for people with mental illness, whether it's an advocate for neighborhood issues, whether it's an advocate for a police department that is partnership policing that's reduced crime 25%.